Please be seated, the sitting is open. The Court meets this afternoon to hear the Russian Federation, France, the Gambia, Vienna and Hungary on the questions submitted to it by the United Nations General Assembly. As I have had the occasion to note, each delegation is kindly requested to keep to the maximum speaking time of 30 minutes for its presentation. This afternoon, the Court will observe a short break after the presentation of the Gambia. I shall now give the floor to the representative of the Russian Federation, His Excellency Mr Vladimir Tarabrin. You have the floor, Excellency.
Mr President, distinguished members of the Court, it's an honour for me to be representing the Russian Federation at these hearings. Seizing this opportunity, I would like to congratulate you, Mr President, Madame Vice-President and all the new judges of the Court upon election to your respective positions. We trust that the Court, in its new composition, will continue making its immeasurable contribution to peaceful resolution of disputes and development of international law. Mr President, the current proceedings originate in the adoption by the General Assembly of Resolution 77/247 back in December 2022. When adopting the resolution, the General Assembly was gravely concerned by the tension and violence in the recent period throughout the occupied Palestinian territories. The Assembly noted the continuing systematic violation of the human rights of the Palestinian people by Israel, the occupying power, including that arising from the excessive use of force and military operations causing death and injury to Palestinian civilians. The Assembly also spoke of the arbitrary imprisonment and detention of Palestinians, the use of collective punishment, the closure of areas, the confiscation of land, the establishment and expansion of settlements, the destruction of property and infrastructure, the demolition of Palestinian homes, the forced displacement of civilians and the disastrous humanitarian situation and the critical socio-economic and security situation in the Gaza Strip. As has been stressed by numerous delegations speaking at these hearings, the situation on the ground has since deteriorated in a dramatic fashion. The Gaza Strip, since October 2023, has been an area of intense hostilities. This time, violence has taken an unprecedented and indeed a catastrophic scale. The overall number of victims during the current wave of violence, almost 30,000, has already surpassed the figure from any of the previous Arab-Israeli wars. Images from Gaza are terrifying. Indescribable airstrikes are killing civilians and erasing whole residential districts. More than half of all buildings in the Gaza Strip have been destroyed. Up to 90% of Gazans have been forced to leave their homes and are living in inhuman conditions. Against the backdrop of the tough Israeli blockade, the Gaza Strip is experiencing a genuine humanitarian catastrophe. Its inhabitants are suffering from an acute shortage of food, medication and fuel. Access to sources of clean water has been limited, resulting in a spread of infectious diseases. Over 20% of agricultural lands have been damaged and will never be recultivated. Mr President, Russia, of all countries, understands the dangers of terrorism. We have faced this evil time and again. Let me use this opportunity to reiterate our heartfelt condolences to the Israelis who lost their loved ones in the attack on the 7th of October. Brutal massacre of innocent people, taking off hostages and other terrorist violence do not have and cannot have any justification. We have repeatedly condemned such acts. Let me also stress that Russia highly values the stable relations that we enjoy with Israel. We are united by shared history of combating Nazism as well as by a myriad of present-day human ties. Our cooperation is resilient in the face of geopolitical turbulence and we are committed to its further development. Having said this, we are convinced that the tragic events of the 7th of October cannot justify the collective punishment of more than 2 million Gazans. We cannot accept the logic of those officials in Israel and some Western countries who try to defend the indiscriminate violence against civilians by referring to Israel's duty to protect its nationals. Violence can only lead to more violence. Hatred brings hatred. This vicious circle must be broken. In Russia's view, security both for Israel and the Palestinians can only be ensured if the root cause of the current crisis is addressed. Outbreaks of violence will inevitably occur again until the Palestinian people, having suffered for decades from injustice, exercises its right to establish an independent state. That state, in accordance with the Security Council and General Assembly resolutions, is to emerge within the 1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital. Only this approach, based on international law, can bring a lasting peace for the region and security for Palestinians and Israelis alike. This is the spirit that has been guiding Russia in fulfilling its responsibilities as a mediator between Palestine and Israel, notably as a member of the so-called Quartet alongside the United Nations, the United States and the European Union. The history of the conflict shows what happens when Security Council resolutions are ignored and influential global actors are incapable or unwilling to help the parties find consensual solutions. Attempts to put the conflict into a low intensity mode instead of a comprehensive settlement have time and again provoked eruptions in the occupied territories. The current wave of violence is no exception. It was preceded by a persistent policy of the United States and its allies aimed at freezing the status quo, watering down the political processes, promoting a one-sided vision of a settlement. Among the victims of such short-sighted and irresponsible approach was the Quartet of Mediators, those of mediators whose work has been effectively blocked by the United States. This flawed policy of Washington has predictably led to a failure that has cost thousands of innocent lives. Today, all responsible members of the international community are facing a difficult task of creating conditions to lead the situation out of the current impasse. After the violent phase has been overcome, the parties will need help in establishing a full-fledged political dialogue allowing them to settle all disputes on the universally recognized international legal basis. Russia hopes that the advisory opinion of the Court will contribute to achieving this goal. Mr President, a lot has already been said in this hall on the numerous violations of international law by Israel. Russia supports the assessments given in the General Assembly Resolution 77/247 and the respective reports of the Secretary-General. We also support relevant resolutions of the Human Rights Council based on the reports of its special rapporteur. In today's statement, let me focus on two of the most important aspects. First, the first one is the persistent denial by Israel of the right of Palestinians to self-determination. The right of self-determination through the establishment of an independent Palestinian state has been at the heart of efforts of the international community. This right has been recognized by the General Assembly, the Security Council and by this Court. It's worth recalling that the principle of self-determination of peoples is one of the foundations of the United Nations, mentioned in the very first article of its charter. Every state has the duty to refrain from any forcible action which deprives peoples of their right to self-determination. Meanwhile, as recognized by the General Assembly, the protracted Israeli occupation prevents the Palestinians from implementing that right. An end to the Israeli occupation has been identified as a goal for the international community by legally binding resolutions of the Security Council, including Resolution 2334. Israel is accordingly under an obligation to cease its violations of international law and to allow the Palestinian people to establish an independent state. This necessarily means that the occupation must come to an end. The other key problem that leads to continuous violations of human rights of Palestinians are the Israeli settlement activities. This policy, sometimes referred to as creation of facts on the ground, was launched back in 1967 and has led to progressive shrinking of Palestinian lands. This has effectively undermined prospects of a negotiated solution of the one element of the final status, namely the issues of territory and borders. The overall number of Israeli settlers in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, is over 700,000. The situation is exacerbated by other arbitrary moves by the Israeli authorities, such as confiscation of lands, demolition of homes and prohibition of new construction. Most recently, this has been accompanied by violence emanating from Israeli settlers. In 2023, that is after the present request for an advisory opinion was made, the settlement activities of Israel have gained a record-breaking high speed. This, according to the latest reports of the United Nations Secretary-General, in 2023, plans for more than 2,700,000 housing units were advanced, approved or tendered. This is more than double than 11,700 units in 2022, which in itself was a remarkable figure. During the current wave of violence, we have witnessed public statements by Israeli cabinet members announcing plans to resume settlement activities in the Gaza Strip. Thus, on the 28th of January 2024, at a conference in West Jerusalem, cabinet ministers openly called for deportation of Palestinians from Gaza and presented a map with 21 settlement blocks. One cannot help noting that the event was held two days after this Court indicated provisional measures in the South Africa versus Israel case. The Court agreed that the situation in Gaza poses risks of irreparable harm to the rights of Palestinians guaranteed by the Genocide Convention. This fact alone underscores the gravity of the situation. In this connection, it's worth recalling that this Court, in its advisory opinion on the wall, recognized that the Israeli settlement in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, had been established in breach of international law. As explained in that advisory opinion, the settlements are contrary to the principle of inadmissibility of acquisition of territory by force. They also contradict the provisions of the Fourth Geneva Convention prohibiting transfers of population and deportations from an occupied territory. Resolutions of the Security Council have characterized that policy as changing the legal status and geographical nature of the occupied territories and materially affecting their demographic composition. In its Resolution 2334, the Security Council reaffirmed that the settlements have no legal validity and constitute a flagrant violation under international law and a major obstacle to the achievements of the two-state solution and the just, lasting and comprehensive peace. This policy is aggravated by numerous violations in order of other rules of international humanitarian law and human rights law. These include the right to life, to respect for private and family life, to property, to freedom of movement, to freedom of religion, to work, to health, to education and to inadequate standard of living. As mentioned earlier, this policy continues unabated in defiance of Security Council resolutions and the Quartet roadmap. Importantly, as stressed in Resolution 2334, the settlements are dangerously imperiling the viability of the two-state solution based on the 1967 lines. They are thus also violating the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. Israeli policies in Palestine, to Russia's deep regret, include other international law violations. Many examples have been provided by other delegations here. The Russian Federation expects the Court to give them due consideration. Mr President, members of the Court, the question before us, therefore, the legal consequences of those violations. The starting point here is the well-established rule whereby every internationally wrongful act of a state entails the international responsibility of that state. In the present proceedings, the Court will be right to conclude that Israel's violations result in Israel's duty to comply with the obligations it had breached, to put an end to its ongoing violations and to provide reparations for the damaged cost. This means first and foremost that Israel is under an international legal obligation to respect the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and to stop all settlement activities in the occupied territory. Given the particular legal framework in the Middle East peace process, Israel is also under an obligation to cease all activities that impede reaching a final status agreement based on the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination in an independent, viable and contiguous Palestinian state with East Jerusalem as its capital. Having said that, the Court will be wise not to engage in a detailed discussion on the precise scope and forms of implementation of Israel's responsibility. This is important for two reasons. First, advisory proceedings before the Court are not an exercise in implementation of responsibility. No state is invoking Israel's responsibility in these proceedings as indeed Israel is precluded from invoking the responsibility of others. A state may only be brought before this Court on the basis of its own consent. Full respect for the principle of consent is of crucial importance for the integrity of international judicial procedures. Secondly, the international community has established a solid legal framework for the Middle East peace process. This legal framework is universally recognized and legally binding one. It contains crucial elements that effectively coincide with the aims of international responsibility. A negotiated two-state solution with an independent, viable and contiguous Palestinian state peacefully coexisting with Israel will be the best recipe for bringing an end to Israeli's violations, creating guarantees of their non-repetition and redressing the damage. The advantage of the peace process is an idea of direct negotiations between Israel and Palestine. They are to reach an agreement on the basis of their free will. In Russia's opinion, that significantly strengthens the chances that an agreement will actually be achieved, will indeed satisfy the interests of both parties and will be implemented in practice. The Russian Federation invites the Court to be guided by the need to contribute to creating conditions for successful final status negotiations. The best contribution would be confirmation by the Court that Israel and Palestine are under an obligation to resume such negotiations, while all states and international organizations shall cooperate in order to make that possible. In its written statement, the Russian Federation has discussed the status of the Court as one of the principal organs of the United Nations. The Court has, on many occasions, recognized that its advisory opinions represent its participation in the activities of the organization. When asked by the General Assembly to provide an advisory opinion, the Court should give an opinion that would indeed be useful for the Assembly. For these reasons, we respectfully submit that the Court, when giving an advisory opinion in this case, should be guided by the principles of the peace process and should actively seek to give an opinion that would contribute to their implementation. Mr President, today I will not dwell upon issues of jurisdiction, admissibility, applicable law or interpretation of questions put by the General Assembly. The respective chapters of the written contribution of the Russian Federation retain their full relevance. Let me now summarize our submissions. The continued Israeli occupation of Palestine impedes the realization of the Palestinian people of its right to self-determination. Israeli settlements are contrary to the principle of inadmissibility of acquisition of territory by force. They also run counter to the prohibition of transfer and deportation of population of an occupied territory. The settlement activities are aggravated by numerous other violations of international humanitarian law and human rights law. All states are under an obligation not to recognize the illegal situation resulting from Israel's violations. Israel shall terminate its breaches of international law. It must, in particular, cease all settlement activities and all other activities that impede reaching a final status agreement. At the same time, discussion on Israel's responsibility must remain within the limits imposed by the advisory nature of these proceedings and to the need to create conditions for successful final status negotiations. Israel and Palestine are under an obligation to conduct in good faith and without delay negotiations aimed at reaching a final status agreement. All states and international organizations are under an obligation to contribute to creating conditions for such negotiations. The agreement thus reached shall result in the implementation by the Palestinian people of its right to self-determination and emergence of an independent, viable and contiguous Palestinian state with East Jerusalem as its capital. This will bring an end to the ongoing violations of human rights of Palestinians and to the Israeli's occupation. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you, Mr President.
I thank the delegation of the Russian Federation for its presentation. J'invite maintenant la délegation.
I now invite the next participating delegation, France, that is, to address the Court. And I call on Mr Diego Corras to the podium. Sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr President. Mr President, distinguished members of the Court, it is a signal honor for me to represent my country before you. Allow me, in introduction, to return, if I may, to the very consequential context of these audiences, of these hearings. 7th October 2023, Israel underwent a terrorist attack of unprecedented scale. France condemned this in the strongest possible terms, the attack perpetrated by Hamas and the other terrorist groups, and expressed its full solidarity with Israel and the victims of said attack. Now, as did the Court in its order indicating provisional measures of 26th January 2024, France called for the immediate and unconditional freeing of those hostages kidnapped by Hamas and the other terrorist groups during the attack on Israel in October. France would also like to recall the right of Israel to defend both itself and its population to ensure that such attacks as these do not occur again in the future. But this right has to be exercised in full compliance with international law and specifically in compliance with international humanitarian law. When Israeli bombing and military operations created thousands of civilian victims in Gaza, France asserted this requirement time and again, clearly and steadfastly. The protection of civilians and aid workers is both a moral imperative and an international obligation. Israel must comply with international humanitarian law which dictates at all times and in all occasions clear principles of distinction, necessity, proportionality and precaution. Let me add that the compliance with international law and specifically international humanitarian law for all parties involved gives the only possible outlook for peace. France took note of the concerns expressed by the Court in its order of 26th January as to the fallout of military operations which are taking place in the Gaza Strip. The Court's concerns regarding, I quote, "the extent of the human tragedy unfolding in the region and the human suffering which we continue to deplore" can only be shared by my country. As the French Minister for Europe and Foreign Affairs recalled during its intervention the Security Council of the United Nations on 23 January, "we must work forthwith towards a ceasefire, a sustainable and durable ceasefire which alone will put an end to the sufferance and the suffering of the civilian population in Gaza." By handing down an advisory opinion in the instant proceedings, the Court can make a valuable contribution to the just and durable settlement of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Indeed, an opinion could usefully contribute to the clarification of the framework and legal parameters applicable to this situation. It will then fall to the parties involved, supported, of course, by the international community to seek a negotiated solution for lasting pace consistent with international law. In this respect, France repeats its unwavering support for a negotiated two-state solution, coexisting side by side within secure and recognized boundaries based on the lines of 4 June 1967. based on the lines of 4 June 1967, both having Jerusalem as their capital. Indeed, for France, only a two-state solution will meet both the right of Israelis for security and to the legitimate aspirations of Palestinians for a viable, contiguous and independent state living in peace and security alongside Israel. To this end, France calls for a decisive and credible restarting of the peace process. The current situation in Israel and Palestine raises a large number of questions of international law, but only some of them are raised by the questions posed by the General Assembly. And in France’s opinion, it is vital that the scope of the instant proceedings be precisely delineated. It will thus be the task of the court to provide the General Assembly with an opinion which, while shedding light on the legal questions posed, goes no further than is necessary to do so. Mr. President, distinguished members of the court, seen holistically and following the order of questions put to the court, my statement will deal on the five following points. First of all, right to self-determination, occupation, colonization or annexation, discriminatory laws and measures, the status of Jerusalem and legal consequences. Before diving into these five points, I would like to make an initial observation on applicable law. To have a comprehensive view of the legal framework relevant to the request for this opinion, it should be pointed out that Palestine has become a party to a number of multilateral treaties since 2004, which was since your opinion, with a non-exhaustive list that can be found in our written comments. First, self-determination. The right of the Palestinian people to self-determination was recalled by the court in its opinion of 2004. The Security Council has also reiterated this on numerous occasions. The existence of a Palestinian people within the meaning of international law is no longer a matter of debate. As such, like all peoples, they enjoy the right to self-determination. Pursuant to this law, to rehearse the terms of Article I shared in both the 1966 covenants, “all peoples freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social and cultural development,” that’s a quotation. Thus, regarding the Palestinian people, this right, first of all, has a political dimension. This dimension broadly enshrined by various General Assembly resolutions, it is characterized by the right to an independent Palestinian state and by the right of the Palestinian people to exercise their sovereignty over their territory and to exceed independence in their state. This perspective fits fully within the vision of a region in which two states, Israel and Palestine, live side by side within recognized and secure boundaries. Any solution for peace will necessarily first require security arrangements being concluded between Israelis and Palestinians, providing concrete and efficient guarantees. At the same time, these security guarantees can only exist if in future a real Palestinian state exists able to conclude such arrangements and ensure their compliance. That’s to say, a state capable of exercising full sovereignty within its internationally recognized boundaries. In this context, France is of opinion that any action running counter to the necessity to preserve the unity, continuity and integrity of the entirety of the OPT, including East Jerusalem, is a violation of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. From this point of view, the continuing occupation, but also the development of settlements and the fragmentation resulting from these settlements undermines the creation of a viable state of Palestine. The longer the attacks to the integrity of the OPT continue and increase, the further the perspective of such a state recedes. More fundamentally, the continuation of those breaches attributable to Israel threatens the possibility for the Palestinian people to effectively exercise their right to self-determination. To this end, the finding by the port in 2004 remains, but the passage of time is not neutral. It hampers the perspective of the Palestinian people’s right to self-determination being realized. Just about 20 years after the advisory opinion handed down by the court on the legal consequences of the building of a wall in occupied Palestinian territory, the multiplication of measures accompanying it and the development of settlements create an equal number of barriers to the self-determination of the Palestinian people. Okay, my second point now. Let me come to the question of occupation, colonization and prolonged annexation of the Palestinian territory occupied by Israel since 1967 now. Two points here. First, the legal consequences of the prolonged character of Israel’s occupation. Then the question of whether this extended occupation, together with the question of colonization, implies an ongoing violation. Well, occupation is a de facto objective situation characterized by one state exercising effective control over a given territory. Since the end of the Six-Day War in 1967, Israel can be considered as the occupying power of West Bank, East Jerusalem and the Gaza Strip, within the meaning of Article 42 of Hagen Regulations of 1907 relative to laws and customs of war. This de facto situation noted by the court and by the UN Security Council assumes that the international norms provided for in case of occupation, military occupation, will be applied. These norms establish the rights for the occupying power in Israel to maintain security, not compromise military needs. But above all, they impose positive obligations, of which the principle is the protection of populations subject to occupation. In this respect, the Security Council and the General Assembly have recalled number of times the obligations of Israel under the Fourth Convention of Geneva relative to the protection of civilian persons in time of war. That’s 12 August 1949. These international norms apply independently of the lawfulness which enabled the state to exercise its effective control over the occupied territory. They apply whatever the length of occupation, even though essentially occupation should be considered as being temporary. The obligations of protection apply to rehearse the terms Article 6 of the Fourth Geneva Convention during the duration of the occupation. With occupation of Palestinian territories lasting since 1967, the prolonged character seems difficult to justify by the necessity of war within the meaning of Article 23 G of Hagen Regulations of 1907. Indeed, circumstances justifying occupation during the period following immediately military occupation, military operations, excuse me, may not be invoked several decades after these operations have ceased. That’s what the Security Council and General Assembly to ask the Israeli Armed Forces to withdraw from these territories a number of times in numerous resolutions. In France’s opinion, the indefinitely prolonged character of an occupation is contrary to the fact that this should be by very nature provisional. Occupation is a de facto question which gives rise to a specific legal regime. The fact that it is prolonged in itself doesn’t mean that it’s wrongful. But the danger here would be a finding of wrongfulness which would lead to this regime no longer applying. That itself would lead to a result which is manifestly absurd and unreasonable, where civilian populations would be deprived from the protection offered by the regime, a protection that’s all the more necessary the longer the occupation continues. Incertainty on the applicable legal framework is all the more prejudicial in the current context of Israeli military operations in the Gaza Strip, territory over which Israel now exercises reinforced control. In this territory today, the affected civilian population must absolutely and necessarily, at the very minimum, be entitled to enjoy the rules of protection provided for by the occupation law.
Turning to my second point, the link of the colonization policy of occupied Palestinian territories, colonization of occupied territories contrary to Geneva Convention’s Article 49 of the Fourth Geneva Convention provides, and I quote, “occupying power cannot deport or transfer part of its own civilian population in the territory that it occupies,” end of quote. The Security Council on several occasions condemned this situation in its opinion 2004. The court also concluded that, I quote, “the Israeli settlements in occupied Palestinian territories in East Jerusalem were established in breach of international law,” end of quote. This state of unlawfulness remains all the more grounded that since 2004, Israel’s continued accelerated its policy establishing or extending settlements in occupied Palestinian territories. On this question, France reiterates its firm condemnation of the illegal settlement policy by Israel. Particularly in the current context, this policy includes eviction of Palestinian families and destruction of properties. War in Gaza in no way constitutes a pretext to continue to impose on the ground unilateral measures that undermine the prospects for a two-state solution, the only one that can guarantee a just and lasting peace. In a joint statement, 15 December 2022, France reiterated its position pertaining to the settlement policy illegal under international law, recalled Israel the obligations incumbent upon it under international law, particular Article 49 of the Fourth Geneva Convention. France also firmly condemned violence committed by extremist settlers who terrorized Palestinian communities, end of quote. On this latter point, France has taken measures on a national basis against certain violent Israeli settlers and stated that it supported the adoption at European level sanctions against them. Furthermore, it needs to be recalled that the status of an occupying power confers absolutely no legal title justifying an annexation. In this regard, the fact that occupation is particularly prolonged can in no case legitimize the annexation claims. Quite the contrary, one of the cardinal principles of international law is that prohibiting this form of annexation has this emerged from Resolution 2625, “no territorial acquisition obtained through the thread or use before shall be recognized as legal,” end of quote. In this context, an annexation of a territory that would seek to be based on the extended nature of occupation can only be considered as null and void under international law. Thirdly, the question posed by the General Assembly also relates to the legal consequences of discriminatory laws and measures related and adopted by Israel. In France’s view, this question refers to the laws and measures applied to occupied Palestinian territories, but in contradiction with the international regime provided for for occupied territories. The laws and measures that present a discriminatory nature contravene not only the provisions cited of the conventions of the Hagen-Geneva, but also international texts in terms of human rights that bind Israel applicable to occupied Palestinian territory. France notes that international humanitarian law doesn’t necessarily exclude that a differentiated status may apply to the population of an occupied territory. Status cannot, however, justify the adoption of laws and measures that would be discriminatory. As the court set out in its 2004 opinion, protection offered by HR conventions do not cease in the case of armed conflict. The right of occupation must therefore be implemented, taking into account applicable human rights law. The occupying power is in particular required to exercise its rights and duties by taking into account the obligation of nondiscrimination, which stems notably from Article 2 of the Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. The question posed to the court also relates to the measures aimed at amending the composition of the demographic composition of the territory. France’s view is that international law clearly prohibits the implementation by the occupying power of measures that would modify the demographic composition of the considered territory. In this regard, France reiterates its condemnation of pronouncements promoting the installation of settlements in Gaza and the transfer of the Palestinian population of Gaza outside this territory. France recalls that the court set out the obligation for Israel to take all measures in its power to prevent and punish such statements, like in the West Bank or elsewhere, such a modification of the demographic composition of the Gaza Strip would indeed constitute a serious violation of international law, both conventional and customary. Fourthly, Mr. President, members of the court, I now come to the question of the status of Jerusalem. Through many of its resolutions, notably Resolution 478 of 1980, the Security Council affirmed the internationally wrongful nature of measures taken by Israel to amend the status of Jerusalem, including the basic law of 30 July 1980 that proclaims Jerusalem as one and indivisible as capital of Israel. Resolution 478 of 1980 recalls the adoption of this basic law does not challenge the application of the Fourth Geneva Convention. There is therefore no doubt that the unilateral status imposed by Israel and Jerusalem is null and void under international law. Furthermore, the protective measures set out in the Fourth Geneva Convention must apply to Jerusalem as in the remaining occupied Palestinian territories. Thus, the expropriation of Palestinian land in East Jerusalem, but also the status which applies to Palestinians in East Jerusalem constitute a breach of the obligation of the occupying power to take such protective measures. In effect, it’s not just the military measures that contravene Israel’s obligations and occupying power, but also the measures of Israeli civilian law applied to Palestinians in East Jerusalem. Israel, under international law, is more broadly required not to adopt legislative rather measures aimed at modifying the status of Jerusalem. As recalled in the presidential declaration of the Security Council of 20 February 23, France considers it necessary to maintain unchanged the historical status quo on holy places in Jerusalem. Fifthly, and finally, the request for an advisory opinion of General Assembly covers the legal consequences arising from the violations of international that might be noted by the court. In this regard, it’s useful to recall that in its 2004 opinion, the court responded by distinguishing the legal consequences from Israel, those for the other states, and where appropriate for the United Nations organization itself. The same will apply for these oral observations. As regards Israel, the first legal consequence is the obligation of cessation of what is wrongful under Article 30 of Articles 2001 of the ILC on the state responsibility for international wrongful acts. The state responsible for a wrongful act is under obligation to put an end to it if that act continues. An examination of the situation in occupied Palestinian territory reveals continuous violations of international law to which Israel must put an end. These violations relate, as we’ve seen, to the people’s right to self-determination on international humanitarian law and international human rights law applicable to the situation in occupied Palestinian territories. Are notably concerned the transfer of Israeli population as part of the illegal settlement policy conducted by Israel and the discriminatory or restrictive measures of certain rights and freedoms of the Palestinian population in the occupied territories. This obligation must be called with even greater force that in the context of the current tensions, the settlement policy has doubled with an increase of violence committed against Palestinians in the West Bank. The obligation of cessation has both legal as well as material consequences as part of the current proceeding. The cessation obligation requires that policies and practices that violate international law must end, also implies the rescinding of domestic legal acts on which they're based, as well as positive action to uphold international law. The second legal consequence stemming from a violation of international law is reparation as part of the current request for an advisory opinion. France considers that this reparation obligation extends to all damage caused to the Palestinian population resulting from Israel's policies and practices that don't comply with international law. As a general rule, the reparation obligation must as far as possible take the form of restitution and failing that compensation if restitution no longer possible. As regards violations of the Palestinian people as a whole, collective or symbolic forms of reparation should be considered. Lastly, in respect of satisfaction, Israel would be required to conduct investigations and prosecute where appropriate person responsible for serious violations of international humanitarian law and international human rights law committed in the occupied Palestinian territories. As regards the other states, the court had already noted in its 2004 opinion the erga omnes nature of international obligations breached by Israel during the construction of the wall in occupied Palestinian territories. As part of this request for an advisory opinion, the same situation applies regarding the infringement of people's rights to self-determination regarding the prolonged occupation by Israel in Palestinian territories, as well as policies and practices implemented in occupied Palestinian territories. There results for all states an obligation of non-recognition of a situation that is a grave breach of international law. No form of annexation, including partial, can be recognized under international law. In this regard, in the occupied Palestinian territories as every Wells, France will never recognize the illegal annexation of territories. Upholding the international status of occupied Palestinian territories also carries with it effects from the economic standpoint. We'll recall in this regard that in Resolution 2334 of 2016, the UNSC requested all states to distinguish in their dealings in this regard between the territory, the state of Israel, and occupied territories since 1967. This leads, in the case of EU law, the inclusion of international law in the opinion of the court in 2004 in order to distinguish products depending on their origin. As regards the United Nations Organization. It could, as was the case, set out where appropriate, the follow-up to be given to the opinion of the court regarding the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and the risk of undermining the international status of occupied Palestinian, notably guarantees offered by the status to the Palestinian population. Lastly, it must be recalled, the court had requested in 2004, the United Nations as a whole, to redouble its efforts to rapidly bring an end to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict to establish a just and lasting peace in the region. This request to embark on peace negotiations between the parties supported by the international community remains more than ever relevant. France is ready to provide its support, all efforts undertaken in this regard. Mr. President, members of the court, I thank you for your attention. I'd like to thank France's delegation for its presentation.
De Gambier, to make his oral statement before the court, I thus call upon his excellency, Mr. Daouda Jalloh, to take the floor.
Mr. President, honorable members of the court, it is an honor for me to appear before you to present the Republic of the Gambia in this essential advisory opinion proceedings. As was the case with De Gambier's written statement, my oral submission today focuses on the second question presented to the court regarding the legal status of the occupation and the legal consequences that arise therefrom. The preamble of the UN Charter reminds us the fundamental goals of our international system: to save succeeding generations from this scourge of war, to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights and the dignity and worth of human persons, in equal rights of men and women, and of nations large and small, to establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligations arising from treaties and other sources of international law can be maintained, and to promote social progress, better standards of life, and large freedom. Mr. President, members of the court, notwithstanding the great resources invested by the international community at large, none of these goals have been achieved for the Palestinian people. None of them. And none of these goals can be achieved for the Palestinian people until Israel's illegal occupation of the Palestinian territories is brought to an end. My remarks today will focus on three points. First, I will discuss the fact that a malignant occupation can be illegal per se under certain circumstances. Second, I will set forth three reasons why Israel's prolonged occupation of the Palestinian territories is illegal, a view shared by a substantial majority of the states participating in these proceedings. Third, I will conclude by emphasizing the essential role of this court in declaring that Israel's occupation is illegal and must be brought to an end immediately. As the court knows quite well, the international system is based on certain fundamental principles of law, which includes peremptory norms of international law or jus cogitum norms. Adherence to these norms is not subject to derogation, and compliance with them is owed erga omnes. To the international community as a whole, some of the recognized jus cogitum norms include prohibition of aggression, prohibition of genocide, the prohibition of apartheid, and the right to self-determination. If a particular action of a state violates one or more jus cogitum norms, that action is illegal under international law. Any state may invoke the responsibility of that state for such a violation and seek an immediate end to it. This is fundamentally the situation regarding Israel's occupation in the Palestinian territories. The international community collectively over many years has found Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories to be illegal, among other reasons, on account of its violations of multiple jus cogitum norms. And collectively, we have invoked Israel's responsibility in that regard to end the occupation. Mr. President, at least one state in the course of these proceedings has suggested that an occupation under international law cannot be illegal under any circumstances. This argument poists that. This argument proceeds that an occupation exists, therefore it's legal. The proposition is unfounded in international law and fails for several reasons. First, this argument confuses jus embellom and completely ignores the jus ad velum. As the court is well aware, international humanitarian law and the jus embellom is the body of law that governs the ways which warfare can be conducted. It includes within it the law of occupation, a body of rules regulating the conduct of occupying power. It is indeed true that the obligations under jus embellom, as they relate to an occupation, persist throughout dependency of the occupation. But separate from jus embellom is the jus ad velum, or the conditions under which state may resort to arm force. It is the jus ad velum that addresses the legality of use of force, including an occupation which is maintained by ongoing use of force. Article 2.4 of the UN Charter prohibits the threat or use of force in any manner inconsistent with the purpose of the United Nations. The only exceptions to this prohibition are the very narrow circumstances of the force authorized by the UN Security Council or self-defense under Article 15 of the Charter. Any use of force outside of these narrow exceptions, that is, any annexation or occupation of territory arising from an act of aggression or otherwise unlawful use of force is illegal. Any use of force that is unnecessary, disproportionate to the threat against which it is exercised is also illegal under jus ad velum. Second, the proposition that an occupation exists, therefore it is legal, also ignores the existence and implications of jus cogitum norms going beyond the jus ad velum. If an occupation inherently violates one or more jus cogitum norms, then it is illegal as a whole, and the occupying power's responsibility for that violation can be invoked in order to bring the violation to an end. The occupying power's ongoing obligation under international humanitarian law do not and cannot preclude the wrongfulness of jus cogitum violations inherent in the occupation itself. For example, the argument that occupations are inherently legal if adopted would directly conflict with and undermine the prohibition on the annexation of territory. Any state that wanted to de facto annex a territory could do so by indefinitely occupying that territory, but not formally incorporating it within its borders. It is the same with the jus cogitum norms of the rights of self-determination. Simply put, flagrant violations of international law cannot be brushed aside by the fig leaf of occupation. Finally, the fifth is that an occupation exists, therefore it is legal, also ignores the fact that the court has determined occupations to be unlawful in the past. As discussed in De Gambier's written statement, this was the case regarding South Africa's occupation of Namibia without title, and regarding Uganda's occupation of the Congolese province of Ituri, the UN Security Council and the General Assembly have characterized occupation resulting from unlawful uses of force to be illegal as well. In sum, a malignant occupation can be illegal per se if it violates the jus ad velum and other jus cogitum norms. Mr. President, members of the court, De Gambier will highlight three reasons why Israel's prolonged occupation of the Palestinian territories is illegal. All three of these reasons, the right of self-determination, the prohibition on apartheid and the jus ad velum, reflect obligations rooted in jus cogitum norms. This conclusion of illegality is shared by a substantial majority of the participants in these proceedings, many for the same reasons as De Gambier. First, Israel's occupation violates the right to Palestinian people to self-determination and is therefore illegal. Theirgumnes right of self-determination is one of the essential principles of contemporary international law and jus cogitum norms enshrined in the UN Charter. The court has before its extensive and uncontested fact-finding, sorry, the court has before it extensive and uncontested fact-finding multiple UN mandate holders, including the Independent International Commission of Inquiry on Occupied Palestinian Territory and the many reports of the special repertoire on the situation of human rights in Palestinian territories occupied since 1967. These reports have been produced by independent UN mandate holders who engage in extensive fact-finding utilizing multiple sources of evidence. The court should accept these reports as conclusive and convincing evidence of Israel's longstanding, ongoing, and indefinite infringement on the rights of self-determination for the Palestinian people. Indeed, there is no end in sight to Israel's occupation. Already extending over 56 years, Israel's current leadership boasts with pride its longstanding efforts to prevent the creation of an independent Palestinian state. As reported by the UN Special Rapporteur, Israel's occupation violates Palestinians' ability to organize themselves as a people, free from alien domination and control. No derogation is permitted from respecting the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. There is no escaping the conclusion that Israel's occupation is illegal for violating the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and that it must expeditiously be brought to an end. Second, Israel's ongoing occupation of the Palestinian territories is also illegal because it amounts to regime of apartheid, the prohibition of which is a peremptory norm of international law. This court has described apartheid as flagrant violation of purposes and principles of the Charter. Once again, the court has before it extensive credible and independent fact-finding demonstrating conclusively that Israel has imposed an apartheid reality in the Palestinian territories. This is clear in the reporting of the UN Special Rapporteur, who concluded that Israel has imposed upon Palestine an apartheid reality in a post-apartheid world. This is also reflected in the findings of the Committee on the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. Senior international leaders like Ban Ki-moon, Desmond Tutu, and former Israeli officials, including former attorney general, former director of Israel's intelligence service, Sin Bet, and former ambassador of Israel to South Africa, have also concluded that Israel's occupation constitutes a regime of apartheid. The most credible non-government human rights organization that report on the situation in the occupied Palestinian territory have also concluded that the occupation is in fact an in-law apartheid regime. A sober review of the uncontroversial evidence convincingly shows that the occupation is a regime of apartheid. As such, Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories is illegal and must urgently be brought to an end. Third, Israel's 56-year occupation of Palestinian territories violates the laws on the use of force, jus ad velum, and is illegal for that reason as well. As discussed earlier, the prohibition on the threat and use of force as a jus cogitum norm, even then resort to force is justified by self-defense in response to an armed attack. The particular force used may still be illegal if it is unnecessary or disproportionate to the threat against which it is exercised. Israel launched the June 1967 war that led to its occupation of the Palestinian territory. After its surprise attack initiating the war, Israel occupied all remaining Palestinian territory in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, the Gaza Strip, as well as Syria, Golan Heights, and Egypt and Sinai Peninsula, effectively tripling the size of the territory under its control. Since this use of force was not taken in response to an armed attack and was not necessary or proportionate even if it had been, the occupation was flagrant violation of the laws of the use of force from the onset. Furthermore, even if the occupation of the Palestinian territories were lawful at once time, its continuation for more than five decades means that it could not possibly still be lawful today. First, the use of force in self-defense is only justified within the strict confines laid down in Article 51 of the Charter, and does not allow the use of force by a state to protect perceived security interests beyond those parameters. As such, essentially preventive use of force are beyond the scope of Article 51. Second, as clarified, as clarified in the oral advisory opinion. Secondly, as clarified in the oral advisory opinion, Article 51 does not apply to situations involving conduct taken in response to purported threats emanating from within occupied territory. Israel therefore cannot justify its occupation as a response to illegal threats emanating from within the occupied as a response to illegal threats emanating from within the occupied Palestinian territory itself. Israel's ongoing occupation of the Palestinian territories also violates the jus ad belum because its maintenance is unnecessary and disproportionate. It is simply not possible that it has been necessary for Israel to maintain its occupation since 1967 for over fifty-six years. Moreover, Israel also cannot possibly justify its settlements upon an annexation of occupied territory as a necessary response to any perceived threat, not to mention the myriad of rights violations that are intrinsic to the occupation. By settling and annexing occupied territory, Israel has acted unnecessarily in using force. Israel's prolonged occupation is also wholly disproportionate to any legitimate aim. Israel's occupation of entirely and Israel's occupation of the entirety of the Palestinian territories long after the period in which they presumed armed attack could reasonably be contemplated makes it even more disproportionate now. And the manner in which the occupation has been conducted, including the establishment of an apartheid regime, renders the occupation disproportionate as well. In sum, Israel's decades-long occupation violates the jus ad belum and is therefore illegal. Mr. President, members of the court, in the almost twenty years since the Wall Advisory Opinion, Israel has only deepened the occupation. Israel has annexed more territory and expanded its illegal settlements. It has further fragmented the Palestinian territory. In Gaza, Israel has dismitted the territory and the Palestinian population there. In the territories overall, Israel has entrenched an apartheid regime. The Palestinian people continue to be deprived of their right to self-determination indefinitely. And all the while, there is no justification under international law for Israel's continued use of force to maintain the occupation if there ever was one to begin with. Mr. President, members of the court, I remind us of the fundamental goals of the United Nations that I recited at the beginning of my remarks. If we are to ever achieve any of those goals in regard to the Palestinian people, then this court must play its role in robustly answering the question posed by the General Assembly. As to the second question posed, the Gambia submits that the court should find Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories is illegal per se for all of the reasons discussed. And the Gambia further submits that the court should find that Israel, all other states and the United Nations are under an obligation to bring about an end to Israel's occupation immediately or at least as rapidly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the court, for your kind attention.
I thank the delegation of the Gambia for its presentation. Before I invite the next delegation to make its oral statement, the court will observe a break for ten minutes. The sitting is suspended. Please be seated. The sitting is resumed. So, I now invite the next participating delegation, Guyana, to address the court and call upon Mr. Edward Craven to take the floor. The floor is yours, sir.
Mr. President, members of the court, it is an honor to appear before you on behalf of Guyana. Guyana is grateful for the opportunity to appear at this important and historic hearing. Although situated far from the Middle East, Guyana has a close interest in the legality of Israel's occupation of Palestinian territory. Israel's activities in the occupied territory, which have been brought into sharp focus by the tragic and ongoing humanitarian catastrophe in Gaza, are a matter of truly global concern with significant implications, not only for the state of Palestine and the Palestinian people, but for all states opposed to the acquisition of territory by force. Israel's continued occupation of Palestinian territory is an offense against this bedrock principle of international law and it is a serious and a continuing threat to a peaceful, secure and stable world. Guyana's participation in these proceedings and its presence here today reflect its firm conviction that an advisory opinion by the court on the questions posed by the General Assembly will play a valuable and indeed vital role in enabling the United Nations and all of its member states to secure full compliance with international law and ultimately to achieve a permanent, just and peaceful settlement of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Mr. President, that belief is one that is shared by the overwhelming majority of states and international organizations which have chosen to participate in these advisory proceedings. However, a small number of states, just five in total, contend that the court should decline to provide an advisory opinion because, they say, "an opinion would prejudice negotiations between the state of Palestine and Israel." A further handful of states, which include the United States, from whom you heard earlier today, do not go quite so far, but they instead urge the court to exercise caution to avoid undermining the existing negotiating framework. Both the advocates of abstention and the advocates of timidity are wrong. There are several reasons why the possible effect of an advisory opinion on negotiations between Israel and the state of Palestine does not constitute a good, still less a compelling basis for either declining to issue an opinion or for restricting its scope. I highlight two in particular. First, the arguments all rest on a fundamentally flawed factual premise. They assume the existence of ongoing negotiations between Israel and the state of Palestine, which could be prejudiced by an advisory opinion. But such negotiations do not exist. There have been no negotiations between the two states for a decade. There are no live negotiations. And this is not a contentious proposition. Indeed, one of the most prominent and vocal advocates of judicial caution, the United States expressly concedes in its written statement that negotiations between the two states are not currently occurring. This is the unfortunate but very real actuality. Nor, if the words of Israel's leaders are anything to go by, is there any realistic prospect of Israel's willing participation in such negotiations in the near future. Recent public statements by Israel's Prime Minister make this abundantly clear. In November of last year, for example, Prime Minister Netanyahu proclaimed that Israel would prevent a Palestinian state in Gaza and the West Bank. That was a position that he reiterated emphatically in January of this year. The second and more fundamental reason why the court should not be deterred from issuing an advisory opinion which answers in full the questions posed by the General Assembly is that the General Assembly, the Security Council and this very court have all made clear that the Israel-Palestine conflict must be and can only be resolved in accordance with international law. In November 2022, for example, the General Assembly adopted Resolution seventy-seven twenty-five, which, I quote, "stressed that compliance with and respect for the Charter of the United Nations and international law is a cornerstone of peace and security in the region." The General Assembly called upon Israel to comply strictly with its obligations under international law and to cease all of its measures that are contrary to international law, including measures which seek to prejudge the final outcome of peace negotiations. The resolution went on to refer to, I quote, "the illegality of the annexation of any part of the occupied Palestinian territory, which constitutes a breach of international law and challenges the prospect for the achievement of a just, lasting and comprehensive peace." In other words, a just, lasting and comprehensive peace necessarily requires compliance with international law. In a similar vein, in February of last year, the President of the Security Council issued a statement which emphasized that, I quote, "The Security Council reaffirms its unwavering commitment to the vision of the two-state solution where two democratic states, Israel and Palestine, live side by side in peace within secure and recognized borders consistent with international law and relevant UN resolutions." The Security Council strongly underscores the need for all parties to meet their international obligations. In the Wall opinion, the court likewise stressed the importance of, quote, "achieving as soon as possible on the basis of international law a negotiated solution in order to achieve peace and security for all in the region." In his concurring opinion in that case, Judge Al-Hassane stressed that, quote, "it is of the utmost importance if negotiations are not to produce non-principled solutions that they be grounded in law." The principal judicial organs of the United Nations have spoken emphatically and with one consistent voice. They could not be clearer that any negotiations between Israel and the state of Palestine must be grounded in international law and must be aimed at ensuring a resolution of the conflict which is in accordance with international law. It is obvious and it is self-evident that an advisory opinion containing the court's answers to the questions of international law posed by the General Assembly will help and not hinder the attainment of that end. Indeed, the very resolution which requested these advisory proceedings confirms that this is exactly what the General Assembly considers that an advisory opinion will help to achieve. Resolution seventy-seven two-four-seven stressed the need to, I quote, "advance and accelerate meaningful negotiations aimed at the achievement of a peace agreement that will bring a complete end to the Israeli occupation and the resolution of all core final status issues leading to a peaceful, just, lasting and comprehensive solution of the question of Palestine." In adopting this resolution, the General Assembly plainly considered that an advisory opinion from the International Court of Justice would facilitate, rather than frustrate, negotiations leading to a peaceful, just, lasting and comprehensive solution. It follows that the court can and should answer the questions posed by the General Assembly confident in the knowledge that its answers will help to achieve a peaceful resolution of the conflict in accordance with international law. Mr. President, I turn now to an important issue of substance, namely whether as a matter of international law, an occupation can be unlawful. The United States, as you heard earlier, contends that an occupation cannot be unlawful or lawful. It argues that occupation is governed exclusively by international humanitarian law, which is concerned only with the acts of the occupying power and has nothing to say about the legality of the occupation itself. For the United States, when it comes to occupation, international humanitarian law is both the start and the end. It is the only game in town. Guyana, like dozens of other states and international organizations, disagrees. Put simply, there is a distinction between the law of occupation, on the one hand, and the legality of an occupation on the other. The conduct of an occupation is governed by international humanitarian law, while the legality of an occupation as a whole is determined by the United Nations Charter and general international law. The argument advanced by the United States that occupation is governed solely by international humanitarian law leaves no room for the application of the Charter or general international law. In particular, it leaves no room for the principle enshrined in Article two, four of the Charter that acquisition of territory by force is absolutely prohibited. An argument which leaves no room for the application of that fundamental principle of international law, a peremptory norm, is not a sound one. How then does one determine whether Israel's occupation of Palestinian territory is unlawful? The answer Guyana submits is straightforward. It is to be found in the principle that occupation is inherently and exclusively a temporary state of affairs and in the jus cogent prohibition on acquisition of territory by force. The inherently temporary character of occupation is reflected in the principle that an occupying power does not acquire sovereignty, not one atom, as Oppenheimer memorably put it, over the occupied territory. It is also reflected in the duty of the occupying power to preserve the status quo ante and to refrain from making any permanent changes to the occupied territory. Temporuness, in short, is the very core and essence of occupation. And it is notable that none of the fifty-seven states and international organizations which filed written statements in these proceedings contend otherwise. It follows that permanent occupation is not occupation at all. It is military conquest. It is annexation. And annexation is, of course, strictly forbidden under international law. It therefore necessarily follows that an occupation which is intended to be permanent is unlawful under international law. Applying these principles, Guyana submits that it is indisputable that Israel's occupation of Palestinian territory is unlawful as a whole. The unlawfulness arises from the fact that Israel has annexed most of the occupied territory, de jure and de facto, including by implanting almost three-quarters of a million Israeli settlers in hundreds of settlements, which Israel's leaders have promised never to remove. In Jerusalem, Israel has formally declared sovereignty over the occupied territory and has expressly extended the application of its domestic laws to that territory. This is a classic quintessential example of the euro annexation. And it is irrefutable evidence that Israel intends its occupation to be permanent. Over many years, Israel's leaders have repeatedly proclaimed East Jerusalem to be an inseparable part of Israel. In the words of Israel's current Prime Minister, "East Jerusalem has been and always will be ours and will remain only under Israel's sovereignty." This unequivocal declaration, and many others like it, have been accompanied by far-reaching actions. These include the systematic implantation of more than two hundred and thirty thousand Israeli settlers in East Jerusalem, an exercise in deliberate demographic manipulation that has profoundly changed the composition, the character and the status of the Holy City. In the rest of the West Bank, Israel has conducted a similar decades-long process of implanting half a million Israeli settlers in more than two hundred and seventy illegal settlements. Those settlements and the network of settler-only roads and infrastructure which connect them form a vast interconnected constellation of illegal colonies to which Israel has extended the application of its domestic laws. The intent and the effect is to establish permanent Israeli dominion throughout the West Bank. Indeed, the highest officials in successive Israeli governments have openly and brazenly declared an intention to exercise sovereignty over the entire West Bank, which they have renamed Judea and Samaria and which they define as an integral and inseparable part of the land of Israel. Israel has created, expanded and entrenched its sprawling network of settlements in the face of repeated condemnation of the illegality of those actions by the General Assembly, the Security Council, the Secretary General, a plethora of UN committees and rapporteurs, as well as the international community and, of course, this very court. Israel's annexation of the occupied territory and its intention for the occupation to be permanent has been widely recognized and condemned by the United Nations. I offer five examples, but I stress that these are merely illustrative and they are very far from exhaustive. First, literally dozens of General Assembly resolutions from the early nineteen seventies onwards have expressly referred to and condemned Israel's, quote, "annexation of the occupied territory." Examples of those resolutions, which span a period of more than half a century, are listed in Guyana's written statement. This vast corpus of resolutions demonstrates a clear, consistent and emphatic recognition by the General Assembly that Israel has unlawfully annexed much of the occupied territory with the intention of retaining it forever. Second, multiple resolutions of the Security Council between nineteen sixty-eight and two thousand and sixteen expressly recalled the prohibition on acquisition of territory by force and condemned Israel's annexation and settlement of Palestinian territory on that basis. Examples of those resolutions are also listed in Guyana's written statement. Those resolutions represent a clear recognition by the Security Council that Israel has annexed most of the occupied territory in contravention of fundamental principles of international law and that it intends to exert perpetual control over that territory. Third, successive Secretaries General of the United Nations have also repeatedly described and condemned Israel's annexation of Palestinian territory in official published reports. In twenty ten, for instance, the Secretary General referred to Israel's annexation of East Jerusalem, which is a flagrant violation of international law. In twenty fifteen, the Secretary General reported to the General Assembly that, quote, "in the West Bank, the establishment and maintenance of the settlements amount to a slow but steady annexation of the occupied Palestinian territory." Similar statements are once again cited in Guyana's written statement. Fourth, the UN's Independent International Commission of Inquiry has also concluded that Israel has illegally annexed much of the West Bank and intends the occupation to be permanent. In its September twenty twenty-two report, the Independent Commission concluded that, quote, "Israel treats the occupation as a permanent fixture and has for all intents and purposes annexed parts of the West Bank." The report went on to describe Israel's settlement enterprise as the principal means used by Israel to create irreversible facts on the ground to support its permanent occupation. The Commission added that statements made by Israeli officials provide further evidence that Israel intends the occupation to be permanent. Fifth, successive UN Special Rapporters have similarly concluded that Israel has annexed the occupied territory. In twenty twenty-one, for instance, the Special Rapporteur reported that Israel's occupation has become indistinguishable from annexation. He highlighted the de jure annexation plans made by Israel and he cited the plentiful evidence that Israeli policies and practices are designed to pursue a strategy of de facto annexation and permanent control over the Palestinian territory. In a report published the following year, the Special Rapporteur observed that the implantation of hundreds of thousands of settlers in the occupied territory was intended to, I quote, "demographically engineer an unlawful sovereignty claim through the annexation of the occupied territory." He concluded that Israel's occupation had burst through the restraints of temporiness long ago and that Israel has progressively engaged in the de jure and de facto annexation of occupied territory. Mr. President, Israel's annexation of Palestinian territory and its clear intention for the occupation to be permanent render the occupation unlawful as a whole. This has already been recognized by the United Nations. In twenty twenty-two, the Independent Commission of Inquiry concluded that, I quote, "there are reasonable grounds to believe that the Israeli occupation of Palestinian territory is now unlawful under international law, owing to its permanence and to actions undertaken by Israel to annex parts of the land de facto and de jure." In January this year, the Secretary General, citing international law and the resolutions of the Security Council and General Assembly, concluded bluntly that, quote, "Israel's occupation must end." When the United States read aloud from the Secretary General's statement earlier today, it regrettably excised these crucial words. However, the State of Palestine read them to you on Monday. As the State of Palestine pointed out, the Secretary General stated one month ago that, quote, "Palestinians must see their legitimate aspirations for a fully independent, viable and sovereign state realized in line with the United Nations resolutions, international law and previous agreements." Israel's occupation must end. Guyana emphatically agrees, both with the Independent Commission of Inquiry and the Secretary General. The occupation is unlawful. The occupation must therefore end, immediately, comprehensively, irreversibly. Mr. President, this court needs no reminding of the importance of international law or of the grave consequences which ensue when it is systematically disregarded. The court also needs no reminding of the profound contributions that its past advisory opinions have made to the plight of peoples and states afflicted by the scourge of colonization. For many, many years, Israel has chosen to place its own expansionist interests above the duty to respect international law, including use Cogan's norms and the UN Charter. The result of that deliberate defiance of international law has been decades of dispossession, oppression and injustice for the State of Palestine and the Palestinian people who have been systematically deprived of their fundamental right of self-determination. These advisory proceedings are a vital opportunity for the World Court to address and to begin to redress the immense harm wrought by Israel's unlawful occupation. With international law as its bedrock and justice as its guide, an advisory opinion from the court will provide a lodestar for the United Nations and all of its member states to chart a course which reverses that dispossession, which relieves that oppression and which remedies that injustice. In Guyana's submission, it is only through the rule of international law that a permanent and peaceful resolution of this decades-long conflict may be achieved. An authoritative exposition of international law, including a determination by the court that the occupation is illegal as a whole and must be brought to an immediate end, will serve the ends of justice, will vindicate the rule of international law and will provide the basis for a just, comprehensive and lasting peace. Mr. President, members of the court, I thank you very much for your kind attention.
I thank the delegation of Guyana for its presentation. I invite the next participating delegation, Hungary, to address the court and call upon Mr. Attila Pidek to take the floor. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the court, it's an honor to appear before you today on behalf of Hungary concerning the case, legal consequences arising from the policies and practices of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. We take this opportunity to reaffirm the importance that Hungary attaches to the respect for international law and rule played by the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. The government of Hungary recognizes the significance of this case and the potential impact it has on the prospects for peace and stability in the Middle East and beyond. In discussing the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, one must reflect on the broader political context. Hungary recalls that in two thousand and four, this esteemed court clearly stated in its advisory opinion concerning the construction of a war case that the resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be achieved through direct negotiation between the parties on the basis of the international law and through the implementation of relevant Security Council resolutions. Since two thousand and four, this fundamental approach has not changed, although numerous aspects of the political context have shifted. As Hamas came to power in two thousand and seven, it rejected fundamental pillars of the existing political framework, in particular the quartet principles, including Israel's right to exist, as well as renouncing violence as means of achieving goals and adherence to previous agreements between the parties. This has significantly affected the existing peace initiatives and has induced intra-Palestinian divisions that have proven difficult to resolve over the years. We must also note more recent developments that have yielded significant change in the broader political dynamics of the conflict. The Abraham Accords established in twenty twenty provided a new approach that has allowed for the normalization of relations between Israel and the number of Arab countries. We believe that, in a political sense, the Abraham Accords represented an effort to create a more conducive environment for the negotiated settlement of the conflict. Moreover, it aimed to provide a solid foundation for enhancing regional peace, prosperity and stability. Unfortunately, the progress of these promising developments were impelled by the horrendous terrorist attacks conducted against Israel by Hamas on seven of October twenty twenty-three. What happened on seven of October was one of the worst terrorist attacks and sexual barbarism the world has seen in hundred years. On that Saturday morning, innocent Israeli civilians were awakened by an unprecedented brutal terrorist attack, the launching of thousands of rockets, the torturing and killing of hundreds, among them babies, and Hamas taking more than two hundred hostages. Hungary strongly condemns these horror terrorist attacks and calls for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. These actions are not just an attack on a democratic country. They represent an assault on all democracies around the world. These actions are not just a clear violation of international law. They are also crimes against humanity. Israel has since been fighting the terrorist organization Hamas with the aim to eradicate terrorists and to prevent such horrific terrorist attacks ever happening again. The evil of terrorists is well shown by the fact that they use innocent civilians, education and healthcare facilities as shields. Spreading the life of both Israeli and Palestinian civilians is of the utmost importance, now as well as in the future, in the interest of a sustainable peace, free of terror. We welcome that the esteemed court has recently called for immediate and unconditional release of the hostages held by Hamas and underlined that all parties to the conflict must abide by international humanitarian law and international human rights law. Upholding the rules is non-negotiable. Not at last, we must also note that the proceedings brought before this esteemed court may directly contribute to the escalation of the conflict. We are of the view that both the present proceedings as well as the proceedings against the State of Israel on application of the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide in the Gaza Strip may be considered as a provocation in the ongoing conflict, not contributing to the de-escalation and eventual settlement of the conflict. A potential utilization of the court in the communication war could create an ever-dividing lines and could continue to fuel tensions in one of the most severe conflicts of recent history. Bearing in mind this aforementioned broader context, let me now turn to addressing three main issues that Hungary considers important to highlight. Members of the court, Members of the court, I thank you for your kind attention and would now kindly ask you, Mr. President, to call upon Mr. Kocis to take the floor to continue with the reminder of the arguments of Hungary in this case.
I thank Mr. Hideg and I now give the floor to Mr. Kocis. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, it is my pleasure to continue the presentation of Hungary's considerations in the present advisory proceedings. Hungary duly submits that the United Nations General Assembly's request for an advisory opinion contained in Resolution 77/247 of 2022 satisfies the conditions set out in Article 65 of the Statute of the Court and in Article 96 of the United Nations Charter, both regarding the competence of the requesting organ and the substance of the request. Accordingly, the court has jurisdiction in this case. However, we also duly submit that based on Article 96 of the United Nations Charter, it is at the discretion of this court to decide whether it exercises its jurisdiction. We put to the court that there are compelling reasons to deny the request for an advisory opinion. All these reasons pertain to the issue of judicial propriety. The reasons include the specifics of the questions, the essentially bilateral nature of the dispute and the lack of consent of one of the parties, as well as the already existing legal framework for the resolution of pending issues and disputes between the parties. Consequently, the Hungarian government is of the view that the court should decline to exercise its jurisdiction. Mr. President, we now turn to the second issue. The compelling reasons why the court should reject to give an opinion on the request made by the General Assembly. We recall the existing precedent for rejecting a request for an advisory opinion based on compelling reasons. The predecessor of the court, the Permanent Court of International Justice, declined to issue an advisory opinion on the status of Eastern Karelia. This decision has never been overruled. We note that the court in its subsequent decisions has always taken due care to demonstrate the factual differences from the Eastern Karelia case when considering the exercise of its jurisdiction. This must lead us to the conclusion that the legal criteria set out in that decision remain authoritative. As to compelling reasons, we would like to bring the court's kind attention to the following three considerations that individually as well as cumulatively may compel the court to refrain from issuing an advisory opinion to the present questions. First, we express sincere doubt that the nature of the question would allow for an appropriate advisory opinion. While the title of the General Assembly Resolution 77/247 speaks of Israeli practices affecting the human rights of the Palestinian people, the question posed in operative paragraph 18 of the resolution says, "legal consequences arising from the ongoing violation by Israel of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and related discriminatory legislation and measures." The questions encompass a wide range of subject matters touching upon the legal status of the occupied Palestinian territories, the unspecified Israeli practices and the legal consequences of both the status of the occupied Palestinian territories as well as those practices. While the questions do not specify the actual practices and legislation, they already provide a distinct qualification stating their illegality and unlawful nature. Replying to these questions would inherently entail an affirmation of the statements incorporated in the question. Advisory proceedings were designed as an instrument to contribute to and facilitate the work of the requesting organs. These proceedings are not an appropriate forum for making the kinds of determinations that are implied in the question. As the court put it in the Kosovo Advisory Opinion, Article 65 of the Statute of the Court has not created a form of judicial recourse for states. In our view, should the court decide to reply to these questions in the form of an advisory opinion, that would be tantamount to adjudication on the very subject matter of the underlying concrete bilateral dispute that undoubtedly exists between Israel and Palestine. This leads us to our second consideration concerning the essentially bilateral nature of the dispute. At the outset, we duly take note of the Wall Advisory Opinion in which the court concluded that the conflict between Israeli and Palestinian parties is located in a much broader frame of reference than a bilateral dispute. However, it must be pointed out that this broader frame of reference has fundamentally changed due to the shifting political dynamics within the conflict. The Wall Advisory Opinion was issued during ongoing peace negotiations between the parties that, alas, have not yielded the desired outcome. Unfortunately, in recent years, despite repeated calls for relaunching good-faith negotiations between the parties by the international community, including this very court, the process has stalled. Deadlock continues to ensue and the conflict thus remains an acute bilateral dispute between the parties. On this basis, we argue that providing an advisory opinion would inevitably raise the question of circumventing consent of Israel as part of this bilateral dispute. We refer to the fact that Israel voted against Resolution 77/247 in the General Assembly in 2022. Israel's attitude in the previous decades has demonstrated its readiness to participate in different negotiations and peace processes. This is the very way the esteemed court itself suggested solving this dispute. For these reasons, we recall our request for the court to exercise its right to decline rendering an advisory opinion. As for our third and final query, we refer to the already existing and accepted institutional architecture for maintaining international peace and security. In this institutional fabric, each actor has its own distinct role and responsibilities as institutional guarantors of peace and security. Within this intricate system, it is the United Nations Security Council that has the primary responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security according to the United Nations Charter. Should the court decide to render an advisory opinion on this matter, this would, in our opinion, inevitably result in the unduly politicization of the esteemed institution of an otherwise strictly judicial character. This could threaten to undermine its ability to contribute to the maintenance of global peace and security. Additionally, such an opinion, irrespective of its content, would inevitably become part of an already heated political debate, particularly in the aftermath of the barbaric Hamas terrorist attacks conducted on 7th October 2023. Furthermore, when discussing the institutional backdrop to this conflict, it must be pointed out that there is, in fact, an established framework for negotiations aimed at the political settlement of the conflict emanating from the various United Nations Security Council resolutions, such as 242 and 338. Moreover, to this day, this established negotiation framework built around the Oslo Accords remains the recognized framework by both parties to the conflict. It is crucial to also mention the involvement of other international mechanisms and actors in the resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, including the United Nations Special Coordinator for the Middle East Peace Process, UNSO. The role of the Special Coordinator is important in facilitating dialogue and negotiations, promoting peace and coordinating international efforts towards a just, lasting and comprehensive resolution. Therefore, one must come to the conclusion that if we are to stay true to this very court's ruling issued in the Wall Advisory Opinion, what is needed today is not a new legal interpretation, but a renewed effort to restart peace negotiations implementing in good faith all relevant existing United Nations Security Council resolutions. In conclusion, we reiterate there is no alternative to the political resolution of the conflict. A political resolution that is based on direct negotiations between the parties which allows the State of Israel to live side by side in peace, security and mutual recognition with an independent, democratic, continuous, sovereign and viable state of Palestine with Jerusalem as the future capital of both states. Therefore, Hungary respectfully requests the court to decline providing an advisory opinion. Mr. President, members of the court, this concludes our presentation today. I thank you for your kind attention.
I thank the delegation of Hungary for its presentation, which brings to a close this afternoon's hearing. The court will meet again tomorrow morning at 10 a.m. to hear China, Iran, Iraq, Ireland, Japan and Jordan. The sitting is adjourned.